I would also like to give notice that the most of the board members met in a, an executive session before this meeting to talk about personnel and legal matters. Today being September 11th, the anniversary of the attacks on the United States in New York, Pennsylvania, and Washington DC, I would like to, in remembrance, please have just a moment of silence. I will open the meeting with public participation. You can speak on any issue that you'd like. Any issue that's on the agenda that is due to have a vote, you'll have an opportunity for public comment at that time as well, but I welcome you up.
Good evening, Sarah Pilling, 29 Garrett Avenue. I'd like to speak to something that is somewhat like item B for the business, which is the right turns only on special roads. I'd like to respectfully request, and I will go to staff traffic, to have a right turn only signs be substituted for the symbol of no left turn at the corner of Garrett and Lancaster. My house is not that far from it. I have a direct view to the corner, and I would guess that maybe a dozen times a day, either a commercial truck or a car takes a left where it says by the symbol, no left, but nobody pays attention to it. The concern is that there's no sight distance to the traffic light at Lowry's Lane. They're coming down over a hill. And I, when I watch a heavy truck that's got a, particularly a tree trimmer, and they've got a chipper behind it lumber up, it's frightening. In addition, living on Garrett, and Garrett has become a cut through because they don't have to stop at a traffic light at Lowry's going west. It's a very heavily trafficked road. A car, a car or a truck that knows it's going to take a left, when it stops, it swerves to the left. And if you're coming up Lancaster Pike and you want to take a left onto Garrett, you cannot because they've blocked it. So that backs up traffic on Lancaster Pike. It's, wouldn't be a new ordinance. I would just respectfully request if the township could find out if they could replace one on the corner and one across the street that is a symbol of a left turn with a right turn only. And just as a PS, I've driven with people who've lived in Garrett Hill for 20 years, and you know what? They take a left, too. It is virtually ignored, and it's time to make it right. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Is there any other public comment at this time?
Good evening. Mike Lahoda, Doyle Road and Southwest Wayne. I just wanted to take a few minutes to commend, and not here, but Ricky Foster and our entire Public Works team here in Radnor, as well as previous boards and administrative staffs. There was a time about 12 years ago, give or take, that we talked about, there was a motion to outsource our trash collection. It was going to save us a bunch of money, maybe, I'm not sure. The current board, the current staff, the residents fought against it. We retained this staff in-house, and over the last three, four, six months, via posts and even news articles on ABC and stuff, our neighboring townships have outsourced their trash collection. They put their trash out and sometime in the next two to four weeks, somebody maybe shows up and picks it up, or maybe they don't, we don't know. But our team comes in like clockwork, and they pick up our recycles, they pick up our trash, they pick up our yard waste. And then in addition, when it snows, I think everybody kind of knows the difference between when they're in Radnor Township and when they're not in Radnor Township, because the roads are so much clearer because of our same, that same Public Works staff. And then, not that we like to have the flooding that we have, but we've had it several times in the last three, four months. They're out there blocking roads, putting out generators to run traffic light, whatever they need to do. I just think that, you know, commendable to our staff, our board, and Ricky, that these guys are the, they're, they really, they really make Radnor a great place to work and live. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and I agree with that comment 100%. We have a wonderful team. Is there any other public comment at this time? Okay, I will move to the consent agenda. We have only two items on the consent agenda. Is there any item that a commissioner would like to remove? And is there any public comment on the issues on consent? Not seeing any. I'll ask for a motion to approve in a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Thanks. Okay. Just one note on our business agenda. There's going to be a reordering at the request of commissioner. I would like to move item E, Resolution 2023-78, will now be in the second position, B. So we will start with item A, which is the Radnor Township Liquor License Transfer Hearing for In-Town Golf Club Operations LLC, seeking approval from the Board of Commissioners for the inter-municipal transfer of a liquor license to the restaurant known as In-Town Golf Club Operations LLC, which is proposed to be operated at 201 King of Pressure Road, Suite 250 and Suite 255 in Radnor. And this is pursuant to liquor, Pennsylvania Liquor Code 47 PACSA, Section 4461B3. Thank you. Please introduce yourself.
Yes. Good evening, members of the board. My name is Ed McHugh. I am the liquor license attorney for In-Town Golf Operations LLC. With me today is George Bain. He is one of the principals of the proposed license entity. Mr. Bain is involved in the ownership and management of the other In-Town Club Golf Operations around the country. There's one currently in operation in Atlanta. There's one currently in operation in Charlotte. There's a proposed operation in Columbus, and I think Nashville. Is that correct? We're here tonight because the Pennsylvania Liquor Code requires us to come before you. They're, we're bringing, we're hoping to bring a license in from Brumall, from Marple Township into Radnor Township. The folks at In-Town Golf has, they've entered into an agreement of sale to purchase a license and hopefully bring it into Radnor Township. And we're coming before you today prior to going to the liquor board and making their application. We're required to come before you and get a resolution approving the acceptance of this license into the township. What I was hoping to do was, was maybe proceed by way of attorney presentation, and then just maybe have Mr. Bain adopt those facts that I state on the record, and then open it up for questions for Mr. Bain, if that's, if that's acceptable.
I'm just going to ask our solicitor, John Rice, to lead us in a little bit here.
Yeah, that, that's fine. I, I think that'll expedite this. If you want to just go through the presentation, if, if he agrees with your presentation, that would be great. But speak into the microphone a little bit closer, because it's, I think some people-
Yes, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Solicitor. So with that, I did just put an exhibit packet together for your consideration. If I can just provide that to the members of the board?
Yes, please.
So some of these materials were, were contained in the zoning application that was presented, I believe, before the township sometime in July. But what I included in this exhibit packet are some renderings of what the location in Radnor will appear if, if finalized. There's also a site plan with specifically the site plan of the restaurant and the facilities themselves, and then a larger version of, of the location itself. There's a proposed menu. There's also a letter regarding parking from the landlord, available parking. And then I just included, included a proposed resolution. I know from the speaking to the solicitor that you guys were going to prepare your own resolution, but I just, I included it nonetheless.
Mr. Riquel, we've put the overhead projector since we'd love for the public to be able to see these as well. If you, sometimes it's a little hard to line it up, but Ian's working with you in the back room. Yeah, it's, it's not easy, but if you look at the screen, you'll see where the camera's pointing, and then once you get it there, he'll be able to zoom in on it or clear it up. Take your time.
I'll just include, I'll just include some of the renderings, and then if anybody has any questions about any of the other exhibits, that, you know, we can, we can move to those. So just a little bit about the proposed operation itself. In-Town Golf in Radnor will be similar to the other locations currently in operation. It will offer upscale food and beverage, the menu of which will be designed by one of the best restaurateurs in the southern region. His name is Federico Castellusso III. I'll give you that spelling in a minute. So In-Town Golf would like to offer alcoholic beverages in the form of, of form of cocktails, draft beers, bottled beers, and it also has a very wide selection of wines. That's included in the menu in the exhibit packet. The location itself is about 15,000 square feet, a little bit more than 15,000 square feet. The anticipated seating capacity of the restaurant will be about 146 seats at tables, chairs, and bar stools. The, in the site plan, you will see the way the premises will be laid out as far as where is the kitchen's located, the seating. And there is, there is a great room, there's, there's going to be a fireplace in, in the great room, and then there'll be the actual golf facilities themselves, that the, the stalls or the golf, the golfing that's going to be offered to, to the members. The interior, as you can see from some of the renderings, will have a sharp appearance. And there are photographs of the actual other locations in, in Atlanta and Charlotte in the exhibits. There will be a pro shop inside, there'll be golf lessons available, locker rooms, a steam room. The anticipated ratio of alcoholic beverages versus non-alcoholic beverages based on their other operations will be about 60% food, not alcoholic beverages versus 40% alcoholic beverages. I believe the hours of operation based on the other locations will be closed on Monday. Tuesday through Friday will be eight, or 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM. Saturdays will be 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM, and Sundays will be 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. No takeout food, no takeout beverages, no smoking will be permitted inside the premises. There'll be approximately, approximately about 20 to 25 employees employed, both part-time and full-time at the premises. Is that correct?
At any given time.
At any given time, okay. They anticipate-
Sorry, when you answer, can you come to the mic? Thanks.
So upwards of 25 at any given time for larger events, but 50 in total is what our target is for our holistic staff.
There will be approximately 350 private members. That's what they anticipate initially. They will take reservations, however, they will also try to accommodate walk-ins as well, obviously walk-in members. They anticipate all of the servers that are responsible for serving alcoholic beverages will be RAMP trained, and the premises itself will be RAMP certified. That is, RAMP is an acronym that stands for Responsible Alcohol Management Program. It's a, it's an educational program offered by the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board. And they will also have transactional scanner devices at the location to prevent any kind of service of alcoholic beverages to minors, similar to what you see in Acme's and Giant's. They'll have that same technology at In-Town Golf. They will also have a very sophisticated camera system installed at their location to monitor the conduct of the employees and also of the members and, and other guests. All of you are familiar with the surrounding area as far as the nature of, of the, the area. It's commercial in nature. So just for the record, there were four licenses available in safekeeping in Radnor Township at the time this agreement was signed, back in February of 2023. I contacted all four of those contacts, and none of those licenses were available for sale. So we, in order to get this premises license, we needed to go outside the township for a license and bring it in. That is, that is my presentation for your consideration. I would just like to introduce Mr. Bain and open it up to any questions and, and answers.
Good evening. Is there anything else that I can add to the testimony or provide context to?
I think we will open it up for some questions from commissioners. I'm seeing Mr. Larkin's light on.
Is everything that your attorney told you true and correct, to the best of your knowledge, information, belief?
Yes, it is.
I just have a couple of clarifying questions. Is that permitted? One, you said fireplace. This is, I'm assuming it's going to be a gas burn off-
Yes, that's correct.
Because there's no chimney in this building.
That's correct, yep. It'll be direct exhausted park code.
And you said 350 members are anticipated?
So our target for opening is 350 members. We actually will be closer to 400 as of our current numbers. We will grow from there with a threshold that is undefined. Our Atlanta threshold is 660 right now.
And, sorry, where's the, where have you acquired the liquor license? What community, what jurisdiction is that?
So we acquired, the liquor license is currently issued for Marple Township. Yeah.
Other questions from commissioners?
So I'm looking at the location. Is this where Palm is now? I'm just asking because of parking.
So it is in an existing office building. There is no other food and beverage tenants in that building.
To follow up on the parking, you say that it's an undefined threshold. So where, and I apologize, I did miss some of the presentation. When it comes to parking, if you have unlimited plus one members, and you have a big, they're not all going to be there at the same time, I'm aware of that, but you have a big event, Founder's Day, whatever it is, how are you going to handle-
Yes, so, and I-
Especially, sorry, and just a caveat, also knowing that there are schools there as well as medical, and it's a very, it's a very well-traveled, busy area. So were there any, one question then, were there any traffic studies done as well?
So were not any traffic studies done. During our permitting process, which is currently on hold, Radnor did request for parking calculations based on the building to be proven with existing tenants and other lease agreements, as well as the letter provided here for proof of our parking capacities. To clarify my definition of undefined threshold, we actually believe that Pennsylvania, we will likely, or for Radnor, we will likely have less than 660 members because of the heavy volume used during the winter. For us, we don't want to ever be over-capacited. We want to provide a high level of service, and we don't want to impede the surrounding area.
Okay, but if you do hit 500, 600, do you have capacity? Maybe it's 500 or 600 divided by three. I don't know if that's the number. So you do have 200, say, parking spots available?
Yes.
Plus for employees and-
Yes, per, per the code required by Radnor, our parking counts are met at the maximum occupancy.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from commissioners? Yeah, go ahead.
I have one simple one. Membership, will it have a minimum, or a minimum age? Do you have to be 21 to get into the, to be a member? I'm a little worried about minors and liquor and-
Understood, understood. Right, as of right now, yes, that would be the case. We do not have any, we have members in their twenties, up to their eighties, but we do not have any members that are under 21.
Thank you.
Yes.
What's the cost of membership?
So there are several different tiers, depending on, typical to a country club, depending on what tier, if you were in, let's say, the maximum, full family membership, all in, the initiation fee is a one-time initiation fee, it's right around $10,000. And then the monthly is right around $400. Unlike other clubs, we do not require food and beverage minimums on top of that. We design our clubs to be a create-your-own journey. So however you want to use it in your normal path of life, we want it to be convenient for you and your family and friends.
Okay, thank you. Solicitor?
Yeah, just a, a couple of questions. This is all indoors, correct? There's no outdoor?
That is correct.
Okay. And I know the building code department is looking at the parking calculations, and that's still going to be complied with going forward with this?
Yes, absolutely.
Is there any music or anything, amplified music? Where would that be in the facility?
So installed throughout our facility, we have surround sound. We keep a comfortable volume of music that is meant for ambiance. It also helps with the general environment and the private nature of the individual hitting bays. So once you're in your own hitting bay, or you're at the bar, you feel like you're in your own zone, and it helps to create a more controlled intimate environment.
Okay. Nothing outdoors? This is all internal?
Correct, nothing outdoors.
Okay. But I don't have any other questions.
There's not going to be any live entertainment, though? Like, no live entertainment, no stage, no stage presentations, right?
So how many, how, other than the suites that you will be taking up, how many are in that building? Like, how occupied is that building?
So I apologize, I don't have that number exact, but when we were here for our zoning board review, our landlord was here as a representative, and they represented that the building is approximately 70% occupied currently, as is the dip from the outfall of COVID and more or less in-office attendees. And our parking letter supports those counts to prove if there was a big event and a larger capacity, the site has more than enough required by code.
And again, I know you said it, but I'm forgetting, how big is the capacity just of the restaurant and the dining and eating space?
So our dining seats are 146. The code occupancy is 411.
Thank you. That's all I have. Solicitor? And I'm going to ask for public comment, correct?
Yes, public comment, and then I have a proposed motion based on what the board's done in the past with the similar types of transfers.
Okay, thank you both.
Oh, sorry, quick question.
Yeah, of course.
Sorry. I, I heard that there wasn't a traffic study done. Do you know when, when do you think the peak times would be?
So based on our other locations, our peak times are actually mid to the end of the work week. So Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. We see on the weekends a higher volume of use during the midday. It is very common to see families in there on Saturdays and families in there on Sundays. But our highest volume use days are the late afternoons and evenings, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
Okay. Commissioners, any other questions? If you wouldn't mind just stepping aside, I'll call for public comment. Is there anyone who has comment on this issue? Not seeing any. Solicitor, do you want to make a suggestive motion?
Well, the suggested motion, and again, it's, it's based on conditions that the board's applied in the past, that there's no outdoor seating or amplified music, either indoor or outdoor, that the applicant would comply with all the terms and conditions of the Liquor Control Board for the transfer, that the applicant submit its building veneration plans to the Department of Community Development and comply with all applicable building and zoning requirements, and that the applicant obtained written approval of Radnor Township prior to any proposed transfer of this license to another location within Radnor Township. So this is an approval for this site, this license. To send it somewhere else in the township, you'd have to come back and seek written approval from, from the township. So there, there are the five conditions that can be approved in the form of a motion.
Okay, my inability to repeat all that, I'm going to ask for a motion for what our solicitor has proposed.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Thank you very much, gentlemen. We look forward to you opening. I guess I, this is beyond the hearing. I just have a question. When is your anticipated open date?
We are shooting for approximately one year from now.
Excellent. Welcome to Radnor.
Thank you very much.
Okay, moving on, as mentioned earlier, I am changing the order of the agenda to pull item E up for consideration at this point, and that is Resolution 2023-78, Authorization to Award Construction Contract B23007 for the South Devon Avenue Area Flood Reduction and West Wayne Preserve Wooded Wetlands Restoration and Habitat Enhancement Project to MECO Constructors Incorporated to Include Contingency and Construction Inspection and Administration Costs in a Total Amount of $4,100,000 to be Funded from Grants and the Stormwater Fund. I'm going to start by seeking a motion.
So moved.
And a second, thank you. And then, Mr. Norsini, do you want to walk us into this?
Thank you, Madam President. So real quickly, so the $4,100,000, that's the gross. We have received $941,538 in grants, so the net to the township, $3,158, $3,158,462. And I just want to add that the, the grants was a, a real team effort. Melissa Kahn, Dennis Capella, and Tammy Cohen on one of those grants, so I got to thank them for the work they did on that. So this project is the West Wayne Preserve and the Friends of the Radnor Trail Park. The West Wayne Preserve, as you see it now, there's considerable dead trees, ash trees, and there's also contaminated soil in there. So the, the project in a nutshell will be to grade that area, reforest and replant it. We would also refurbish the pipe that goes under the Radnor Trail. That would take it through to the little creek that goes down beyond. On Friends of the Radnor Trail, there's a few facets to the project. Inlets would be installed further on West Wayne Avenue to try to catch some of the runoff and reduce the flooding that happens under the bridge by the veterinarian office. The existing stone parking lot, which is a, a maintenance nightmare amongst other things, will become a porous paving parking lot. And in the area now, for lack of a better term, where the dogs run on Friends of the Radnor Trail, that will be the area of the subsurface system. So the whole goal of this is to help folks who live directly downstream from here, and I don't know that a lot of people are aware that South Devon Avenue does flood, too, in, in our big storms. It floods pretty badly. So this is, again, was designed by Melior Design, and they have put forth that it's, again, that 10-year, one-hour event, that this system would be, is designed and will be constructed to handle.
Commissioner Abel, do you want to speak to this? It's in your ward, I know it's important to you.
Sure, appreciate that. And Steve, you know, first I want to thank you and your staff, you know, it's been a long- You know, it's been a long five years that we've been talking about this project and we've had to clear several hurdles, but you know, the end seems near. You know, this is a big project for West Wayne, but it comes with an impact. And I don't, what I don't want is neighbors to wake up one morning and see the West Wayne Preserve cleared. But it is, it's a reality. As Steve said, a lot of these trees are dead or in the area that needs to be regraded. So Steve, can you speak to the impact and what we're going to see in terms of tree removal? And more importantly, replacement?
So we, just to set the table, we did receive approval from the Shade Tree Commission as well as the Park and Rec Board. So in the, when we grade an area, right, there can't be trees in between those proposed grading lines. There are about 80 viable trees on the site and out of a total of 400. So in total, 400 trees would be removed, 80 of which are viable. Our replanting plan goes over and above the compensatory tree requirements exponentially. So it's not just trees that will go in. It is understory, it is to create new forest as time goes on. And it's very intense. There's quite a bit, there is literally between the actual trees, the shrubs, the plugs, the bare root trees. There's thousands of trees of items going in, literally thousands. And to that end, understanding that is a monumental undertaking from a maintenance standpoint, not just seeing, number one, it's knowing what has to be removed, but also actually doing that work over the area of an acre. We've included a three-year maintenance plan in this project. So as not to overtax township staff. So as part of this, for the first three years, there is a contract to have, you know, the areas weeded, dead plants replaced up to a certain amount. And then after three years, we would evaluate. The goal is to get things to a level of maturity that A, they have a better survivability and also it is easier to determine what is, what has been planted and what was not. If you go by certain BMPs, it can be tough to tell the difference between what we call a weed and what was planted. So this, that's the reason for this, along with just the sheer magnitude of it.
And the, that plan is laid out in our packet in a lot of detail for anybody who's interested in taking a look at that.
Yeah. Steve, if this were to be approved tonight, what's the timeframe? And the schedule? How long would the Friends of Radnor Trail be, you know, off limits to the neighbors? And how long would we see work being done inside West Wayne Preserve?
So the goal was to have the West Wayne Preserve portion of this completed and planted by this fall. Due to some of the review items in the bid, and as you can see, it's not the apparent low bidder. It is the actual lowest responsible bidder. That added time onto this. So I am unsure that we can actually make that schedule. So really what it's going to come down to, Commissioner, is the winter. So for the sake of this, let's assume that we're not going to get our plants in by this fall. We follow the PennDOT rules. We don't plant after May 15th. We do plant again basically September 15th to October 15th roughly. If we don't make that timeline, then it would be that spring planting. So if we have a reasonable winter, my hope would be that we can get the West Wayne Preserve portion done, but understanding it is a wetlands, it is like a swamp. So weather can really affect how this project moves forward. The goal would be to get that done and hopefully planted in the spring. Then we move directly over to the Friends of the Radnor Trail again in spring. And we anticipate that that, the Friends of the Radnor Trail would be unavailable for use for about five, six months.
So would you start, would you clear it this, in 2023 and then come back in the springtime to plant? Or would you wait till spring of 2024?
So the one thing we have to wait for is after tonight's meeting, Melissa Kahn sends the contractor another letter. We go back and forth. And then at one point, we're going to get a schedule, but they physically can't start right away. They have to meet our bonding requirements and then their submissions. So with the front, with the West Wayne Preserve portion, clearing is absolutely the first step. So that would be number one. My thought is the contaminated soil would be, the removal of that would be number two. And then the grading, rehabilitation of the pipe, again, spring planting. And hopefully, if the winter allows, they move right over to Friends of the Radnor Trail. And the reason Friends of the Radnor Trail would be closed is it's a pretty sizable excavation for the subsurface system that's there. So aside from this, you know, big hole in the ground filled with things, there's going to be piles of dirt. And as they move their way through, that parking lot gets excavated, stone porous paving, and then additional piping. That's why that timeline is what it is.
Okay, and how are we notifying neighbors when the project will kick off?
So the goal will be, if the board, if it so pleases the board to award this tonight, we will send some letters out to the immediate residents that face the West Wayne Preserve. We're also going to do a sign. And the idea would be to have a QR code on the sign because there's just too much information to put forth on an eight-by-four sign, right? That will let people know what's going on. So my thought would be the folks right on Conestoga Road, which I believe is in another ward, as well as the folks that border the West Wayne Preserve, we would get letters to. And then the rest would be informed via our website and the sign that would be up.
Okay, and with that QR code, I just jogged a couple other thoughts. Will that include all of the previous town hall meetings and videos that we've captured on this issue?
The intent was, would be to have the Meliora Study, which showed the, basically the before and after, the plan set for this project and a couple of renderings and the benefits, as well as the list of plants and the three-year maintenance package.
Okay, and then final question. This 4.1 million comes from the bond, correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I just have one question about the contaminated soil. Can you expand on that, please?
Yeah, that's been there for some time. I'll say decades because actually there's trees growing out of it. Like sizable 18, 21-inch trees coming out of that contaminated soil. We don't know how it got there or who did it, but it's very evident. It's literally dumped, you'll see piles there. And again, they're decades-old piles. But we were required to do soil testing. And when we did that, that came up hot, if you will. So it's all part of the bid, how that gets removed. Now, the one thing we don't know, we have a quantity for that, but that quantity can vary once they actually start going down into the ground.
And what is the contamination?
I believe, Commissioner, and I apologize, I think one of them was arsenic. They're the common ones we seem to find. We had contaminated soil, King of Prussia Road. They seem to be, we have contaminated soil on the proposed Radnor Trail extension. And they all seem to be similar along those lines.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions or comments from other commissioners? I'm not seeing any. Is there a public comment on this?
Good evening. Kathy Wright, Lenora Avenue, on the other side of Conestoga, which used to be part of Ward Six. I just want to say thank you. It's been almost 20 years and several commissioners ago that we initially approached the board and said, please, it was once called the Live-In Track, and they wanted to put 20 condominiums on that site. And we said, no, please, no. And those of us who've been in the same area just want to say thank you to everybody who's done all of this work and stood tall, the Riverkeeper and, you know, everybody who just was here for all of these years. This is wonderful.
Thought that was on. Thank you for your comment. And I'm not seeing others, so I will call the vote. All in favor, say aye. Excellent, thank you very much. This brings us back up to item C, sorry, the original item B, which is Ordinance 2023-05, Adoption Amending Chapter 270, Vehicles and Traffic, Sections 270-10, Prohibited Right Turns on a Red Signal, Section 270-11, prohibited turns at an intersection, and Section 270-16, Stop Intersections Specifically to Add Montrose-Roberts County Line Eagle and Beech Tree. I'm going to ask for a motion first.
So moved.
And a second? Thank you. Chief, do you want to speak to this?
Commissioners, when we read this off, this is an administrative function. When we make changes, we adopt it into our ordinances so that they're on record and also that helps us maintain when we do one of our annual inspections.
Thank you. I will just make a comment that one of these is in my neighborhood and people are having a real difficult time figuring out how to only go right when you're on Roberts Road. But we're working on it. The signs are good. I think it's just changing behavior. But I, some guy got a big honking from me today. So for all of you out there, please note the signs. We do change traffic patterns based on safety considerations. And I ask that you please obey our traffic laws here in Radnor. Is there any other comment from commissioners? Is there any public comment? I don't think, did I ask for a motion? I, thank you, I'll call the vote. All in favor, say aye. Thank you very much. Now we're moving on to the original item C, which is Resolution 2023-77, Preliminary Final Land Development Plan Approval for the Villanova University Parking Garage. While we're waiting for them to come up, I will ask for a motion. And a second?
Second.
Great, thank you, welcome.
Evening, Nick Canilia, for the university with our team as well. We've reviewed, this was before you previously, last month during caucus. We have reviewed the resolution. Resolution's acceptable to us with all terms. I know the engineer letters are incorporated there and plus some other items. And we're fine with it.
Are there any questions from commissioners, comments on this project?
I actually would just like to thank Villanova for having the neighbors' meeting, listening to the concerns, addressing them, and coming up with another plan. So, thank you.
Other comments or questions? This one's pretty straightforward. Is there any comment from the public? I'm not seeing any. We will call the vote. All in favor, say aye. Congratulations.
Thank you, have a good evening.
Okay, moving on to Resolution 2023-76, Consideration of Settlement Agreement with the Jewish Federation of Greater Philadelphia for Property Located at Bryn Mawr Avenue Consistent, Consisting of 34.49 acres. It's parcel number 36050285801. This item, hi, this item was tabled at our last Board of Commissioners meeting and we welcome you back to present again. So that didn't work out, right? It goes that way? I would say the papers are okay, my keys are not. All right. Now we're good. Okay. David? All right, are you projecting something?
I am, I'm going to load it up here.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think Ian's got the heads up for you. Thanks.
Michael, you said it's already loaded, right? Under the BOC meeting? There it is. Thanks. So that's being loaded. David Falcone here on behalf of the Jewish Federation. It's good to see you all again. We are here to discuss the proposed settlement for the project at the Jewish Federation Swartz Campus, which is up here. I just handed all of you this presentation so that you have it in front of you, but we can get through it here. Oh, it's PDF. Got it. So just a little bit of background on the project. This appeared before the zoning hearing board and was granted in part and denied in part. And the applicant, the applicant appealed two of the conditions which were denied. That was encroachment into the steep slopes as well as building length. The project here is for the campus, which you're all familiar with, which is the Swartz Campus, which is primarily used by Barak Hebrew Academy. The building on the left identified as Hevner Hall is being ultimately demolished. And the project is to construct a new senior living facility. That facility will include living, independent living, personal care and memory care. There will be 149 units, 79 independent living units, 49 personal care units, and 24 memory care units. Most of the parking here will be located in underground garage. The campus includes three primary users, the Barak Hebrew Academy, J-High, Heter Habad towards the front, and one primary user in the back, which is Harkham College. It is all owned by the Federation. The different buildings are described here. There is a main school building, an annex, that's the Barak Hebrew Academy, Harkham College in the rear of the property, and J-High, which is located between the Barak Hebrew Academy and the Hevner Hall building. Directly adjacent to this project is the Proclamation Presbyterian Church. We note that because during the process, in front of the planning commission, the church came out initially with some concerns about the project and after discussions with them, came out in support of it. The, the project is proposing as part of the settlement a couple of significant improvements. Stormwater management enhancements, as you are all very aware. In Radnor, stormwater is important. Part of the process was to over-design the stormwater, which was agreed to by the applicant during the initial process. But during discussions with staff, we proposed to enhance those even further. That's part of that settlement proposal, which you're all familiar with. There is also a pedestrian connection along the front of the property. You'll see it on the next plan. And then a crossing along Bryn Mawr Avenue, which will connect that crossing with the apartments across the street. And there is a pilot amendment. There's an existing pilot located on the property with the Federation. There is going to be an amendment to that with respect to this project. This plan, which you see here, identifies the steep slopes on the property. There are several different types of steep slopes. There are what we believe to be man-made steep slopes. There are natural slopes of varying steepness. And there is slopes along the front of the property near Bryn Mawr Avenue that were constructed as part of a approved plan. Those are your green slopes out front here. Those are not regulated by the ordinance. The proposed settlement plan is shown here. This is the building, the proposed senior living facility. This is your existing turf field located in the front of the property. The connection will come down and run along, the pedestrian connection, run along Bryn Mawr Avenue. And then there will be a crossing here. We will work with PennDOT on that crossing, which will connect it to the apartment homes here. Access to the project will be taken off of Bryn Mawr Avenue. We've worked with the fire chief to provide for appropriate fire truck circulation as well as emergency access to the rear of the building. So there's 360-degree protection for the building in the event of an emergency. Those were also adjustments that were made as part of the settlement process and discussions with staff and the fire chief. This plan on the screen now shows the stormwater management being proposed. Right now, the project and the area of the property are unregulated. As part of this settlement and the development of this building, we will regulate, regulate stormwater and over-design again beyond what is required by the code. As I just mentioned, the applicant worked closely with the fire chief and staff to come up with circulation that is safe for both fire vehicles and emergency vehicles. The plan was to ultimately create additional access to the back of the building, which is what you see here. Bryn Mawr Avenue is located towards the bottom of the screen. This is the back of the project. The fire truck will come into the back. The fire truck will come into the back and now can reach farther to the side of the building so that they can, again, serve the whole building in the event of an emergency. Proposed elevations. The elevations and the design of the building changed as well as part of the settlement. The aesthetics of the building were adjusted to match better what was on the campus. That was in discussions with numerous parties. The roof was adjusted, and then the rear of the building was adjusted as well to allow for that additional fire access that creates more of a walkout environment on the back. There is a deep separation now being proposed in the middle of the building that addressed some of the building length concerns with a more significant step back, a different articulation. This is the rear of the building, again with the walkout component and the garage. Again, parking will be provided primarily under the building and will meet township Renderings for the building. Project milestones. Throughout this process, the applicant went to significant lengths to engage the community and engage the township. There was a near neighbor meeting that was scheduled. Again, there were several meetings with the Proclamation Church in order to address some very expressed concerns that they had with respect to access and parking. Those were ultimately satisfied and the church again issued a letter of support for the application. We met twice with the planning commission. I should also note that the applicant proposed to the planning commission through the process to come and walk the site. We did have a few members come out and actually walk the site with us, as well as a member of the Shade Tree, to come out and evaluate the site, the trees, the slopes, and so forth. So we were happy to have that. We did reach again that agreement with the Proclamation Church. We appeared before the zoning hearing board on the nineteenth of January. We had staff meeting with the fire marshal as well, and that was the twenty-second of February. Again, I said additional and significant conversations with the fire marshal to address those concerns for safety access to the site. We took those concerns, we brought them into the plan. We filed a notice of intent to appeal in April. Township entered their appearance a couple of weeks after that, and then we had an additional meeting with the township to discuss, discuss the project. And that ultimately brought us back to you as part of that process. I tried to make it as quick as I could. Again, I think that, you know, many of you have, were aware of this project and aware of it, but I should note also, we were able to walk the site with Commissioner Farhi after the last meeting. We were, we were happy to have that opportunity, so thank you, Commissioner.
Great. I will open it up for comments and questions from commissioners, now that you've seen the renderings and the plans.
Dave, thank you. So just, thank you for walking. Appreciate it. I'm sorry, is that Mike, Frank?
Mike.
Mike. So, yeah, no, I, I get it. No one likes change. The building is old, you have to, you know, you grow or die, and no one likes change, but I, for me, this is the most palatable change and it is, you know, it works in conjunction with what is on that site, so that's fine. Just curious, so what is the pilot currently? And then, why is there a pilot as opposed to not, you know, as opposed to them seeking non, you know, tax-free nonprofit status?
Sure.
And then what will the pilot be afterwards? If you have those numbers and give me the reason.
Sure, sure.
That'd be great.
So, the Federation is an exempt entity. They own the entire site. That's why there's an existing pilot today. They, they agreed to pay some portion of taxes to the township as part of their operation at the site. That was an agreement between them and the township. So, as part of this development, the existing pilot, which is nearing its expiration, but has been amended in the past to extend, it will likely be amended again. This, this pilot will step in and create its own assessment and valuation. The county will, will assess this property, this building, once it's built. And then, once that happens, the Federation will enter into an additional pilot just for this portion of the property, which will create additional tax revenue to the township that's associated only with this piece, but the existing pilot itself will continue to generate revenue for the township. So this would be additional tax dollars to the township. And again, the Federation will own, will own this property, which is why it will, you know, remain tax exempt.
Do you have the numbers on what it is now and?
I do.
And, and I get it. It's got to get assessed and then we have to agree to that. No one wants to.
Correct.
Litigate. I, I get it. I'm just curious.
So what I can give you, I believe, is what is currently being paid to the township under the, under the, the pilot, which is sixteen thousand and eighty-seven dollars. Does that sound right to you?
I'm going to look it up.
Yeah.
Versus the.
I'm, I'm pretty sure the existing pilot is sixteen thousand and eighty-seven dollars. We, we believe, again, based on, this is dependent on the, the county reassessing this building. So we have an idea what we believe it'll be assessed at, and so this building itself would throw off an additional nineteen thousand and five-hundred-and-four dollars.
Okay, and that's just to the township. Now, would this pilot also have to go to the county as well as?
So that, that would be.
As well as the school board.
That would be up to those boards to enter into an agreement with us. So this agreement is with the township as, as part of this process.
All right. Great, yeah, I just, thank you, and I see MJ out there. I spoke with him and people planning and there's a lot going on and I appreciate all the people with their input and the neighbors and, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments from commissioners?
I would like to just, you know, let you know of my support. So this is in my word. The Jewish Federation is a great neighbor and that land is really beautiful, so the idea that we can keep a good neighbor on land that they take great care of. It is one of our polling places, is at J-High, so, you know, really, I think it, it's a good project. I think this is a need in our community to have some senior living. And I do want to commend that you've come out early, you've come out often, you've talked to neighbors, you've talked with me, I've had many conversations, I've had coffees, I've had phone calls, so very active in, in making sure that everybody was on board, especially the work that you did with the Presbyterian Church and neighbors who are most closely situated. So I, I, I do believe that this is a valuable project and I'm glad that we've gotten here tonight. So, that's all I have to say. I will ask for a public comment on this project, if anybody would like to come forward.
Madam President, if I could, no, while, while we're making our way up to the microphone, I just want to answer the question on the existing pilot.
Come on up.
So we were able to look it up at about eighteen thousand dollars. So, yes. Mr. Falcone was spot on.
Thank you.
Hope you enjoyed that little dance there. Marlon Eason, two-thirty Windermere Avenue, so a resident of Radnor. I've become aware of this pretty late, so I just have, I guess they're not really comments or more questions. I noticed on the plan, when it comes to the trees, particularly on that very steep slope, since that is a forty percent grade, which is about equivalent to three stories, it appears that all of the existing trees of somewhere over a hundred are being removed because the designation of existing trees and removed trees are exactly the same, so, on that. So given how much we're spending on stormwater management, that is a heck of a lot of water and trees absorb a lot. That's my comment. Thank you very much.
Dave, if he would like to address that, I'd ask you to come back up.
Sure. So, again, we were just out on the site not too long ago with Commissioner Farhi, and if you look to the back of the building, really where the, the encroachment goes into the slopes, there are very few trees located on that slope, and the larger trees are located towards the bottom of the hill, the kind of the older, larger trees outside of the area of disturbance. That was one of the things, we actually walked with Matt Golis, who was on Shade Tree as well, because he wanted to take a look at those trees. So, really, the, the slope encroachment will certainly disturb trees, but the, the, the dense forestation on the property is really one, not located near this development, but is not located on those slopes to the back of the property. Again, there will be a steep slope, there will be tree disturbance, but it will be more towards the, towards the left of the building, looking from Bryn Mawr Avenue, and those are not the most mature trees. And obviously, as part of land development, we would comply with all of the planting requirements as part of that. And then, again, speaking specifically to stormwater, the site is currently unregulated right now, so there's no stormwater management. This will create a significant stormwater benefit.
Thank you. Is there other public comment?
My name is Bill Gregg. I'm a resident at eight-twenty Castlefin Lane in Bryn Mawr. I abut properties with the Proclamation Presbyterian Church. Presbyterian Church is between my property and the Jewish Federation property. However, because of the size of this endeavor on the Jewish Federation's property, it is causing construction activity to occur over on the church property in the form of reconfigured intersections, where there's a connecting road, grading, because there's going to be a new road that goes out to Bryn Mawr Avenue. So I've sort of been brought in to becoming an adjacent neighbor with the Federation based on that. And I wanted to point out that the Federation has been awarded, as it were, special exception by the township for senior living, but the Proclamation Presbyterian Church has not been awarded that same designation. However, Federation is going to be building, doing construction on the church property through an agreement, which is secret maybe, between the two of them, and I think in the future, even anticipating utilizing their parking lot and driveways for service vehicles. And I don't think that's acceptable. They're two different properties and the church does not have that special exception granted to them. So I wanted to point that out. If you go back twenty-five years, when the church acquired that property, they acquired a substandard parcel. It's only nine-point-three acres. You have to be ten for a PI, is my understanding. So they've been, you know, running a little on empty and they made a deal, it used to be a gentleman's agreement between the Federation and the church, where the church could use their parking spaces, forty of them on Sunday. Well, I think they were pressured into signing their support letter so they could have that, a guarantee that they could do those parking spaces, which is fine, and as far as, I'm sure they, they're supporting them in other ways, but there are all these sort of subtleties between these two organizations that does have an impact on residential neighbors, and it's sort of done outside of the zoning of Radnor Township. So I'm just bringing that to your attention because it's a very big concern. I don't want to see moving vans being directed through the church property to go over to the new senior living facility. I don't think that's fair because the church does not have that designation. I'd like to move on to the steep slope. I was glad to hear that Mr. Falcone said we believe it's man-made. I can actually say that I was an eyewitness to the construction of Hevner Hall back in nineteen sixty. I saw the site before, during, and after construction, and it was a natural steep slope. I think your design team is getting confused with what a slope is and what a surface is. The slope hasn't changed. The surface has changed. There have been some utilities put through that slope, but the surface has been restored and the vegetation has changed over time. So, I just want to point out, it's my belief, based on eyewitness, that's a natural slope. God made it. Mother Nature helped them. Very important fact, and I think the slope has been villainized.
Sorry, just one more minute.
One more minute? Okay. Finally, I think, reading through that agreement, it looks like it was authored by the Federation. There's a lot of holes in it that allow for future manipulation of their design. So I would get a good lawyer for the township, tighten that thing up, because you don't know what's going to happen. It's not, it's a loose document. It really is. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your comments.
So I can answer just, I think, one, one point that's important to address. So there, there is no construction activity on the side of the Proclamation Church. There has been a long existing use easement for the parking lot that's located. Right here is an existing parking lot. Here's the existing access point from the Proclamation Church. They've had the right to use this parking. They will continue to have the right to use that parking. That parking lot is not being expanded, but contrary, I think maybe some of the information we just got, the access point is going to come down towards Bryn Mawr Avenue on the Federation property to keep cars off of the Proclamation Church property. So that, that was important, but it will all be located on our side of the property. So, just for some clarification there.
Thank you both for that. Are there any other comments from the public? Okay, I'll ask for a motion to approve in a second. All in favor say aye. Okay, ready to go? Thank you. Mr. Norsini, I would just like to get some confirmation from you that you take very good care of observing construction activity in large developments like this. So, I'm assuming that there is monitoring to ensure that they are not encroaching on other neighbors and property owners. Is that right?
Yes, ma'am. So, Madam President, when, when they finally get through the land development process and plans are finalized and recorded, we'll have a meeting with our QCI, our inspection firm, our appointed inspection firm. We'll have a pre-construction meeting with the applicant. We'll go over all those things, limit of disturbance, what they can and can't do, tree removal, and we'll have an inspector in the very beginning on-site regularly as opposed to later on. But yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. I live around the corner, so I will also be looking. So this takes us to our final item on the business agenda, which is Ordinance 2023-07, Introduction Approving a Three-Year Lease for PIS, PAISBOA for a portion of Radnor Township Municipal Building, Consisting of Approximately One Thousand Five Hundred Square Feet. May I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
In a second.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. White?
Yes. This introduction tonight is with PACEBOA.
I know. I, I knew there was a way to say it and I knew I was going to mess it up. PACEBOA.
Legally, they're changing. That, that used to stand for, I believe, the Philadelphia Area Independent School Board Officer Association. I, they, I think they've eliminated that and now they're just PACEBOA. And that's part of what's being worked into the, the agreement that's up for introduction tonight. So this is replacing a three-year agreement that is set to expire at the end of February twenty-twenty-four. They asked if we would consider moving the replacement sooner to align with the calendar year, which is their budget cycle. So this, that's one of the changes with this, is that it'll go from January to December over the next three years. It does include some cost of living increases in the monthly rents. Other than that, I, I think I said this back in twenty-one, when we adopted the, the now existing agreement, the PACEBOA is a fantastic tenant. They occupy a space in this building that would otherwise be vacant. They're great to have here and we enjoy having them be part of our office space here. So, looking to introduce tonight, and then it'll be back in October for consideration for adoption if the board so chooses.
Are there any questions or comments from commissioners?
Yeah, I, I just can't vote. They're on my medical card. I, I use them.
You can abstain from this vote. I guess my only question is, is there, does the township need the space? Is there any space constrictions that we are dealing with that, that suite would, that we would need to take that back at some point?
Not for the next three years. We're in. We're in good shape for the next three years. It's part of our conversation when this comes up. I'm hemming and hawing a little bit because I think our directors might disagree with me on that, but we're in good shape for the next three years.
And what's the annual rent?
For '24, it'll be $44,580, then $45,690 in '25, and then $47,290 in '26. So about, you know, in that range.
Thank you very much. Any other questions, comments? Any public comment? I'll call the vote. All in favor, say aye. Nay? Recusal? Abstain? Okay. So that is our agenda for the night. I will move to reports from our board liaisons. Does any commissioner have anything to report from a committee, commission, or board?
I will go very quickly. Just want to thank Tammy Cohen for all she does for the community on, there's a lot out there. So if you don't get her rec letter, I strongly recommend that you read it. A lot of great events at the Willow, so I know there's a play. The one that I want to bring, which is a WART 7 as well as a Radnor rec that Tammy Cohen actually made the resolution for, is, I think it's 12, around 12:30 on September 23rd, we'll be honoring George Sidner, who was the first African-American detective here at Radnor. He was, he's right outside on the wall for the Delaware County Sports Legends Hall of Fame. He's a member, a member and honoree there, as well as he was a world record, pardon me, a world record holder. And he, even when, after he was a policeman, he was a crossing guard and gave his whole life to the community and fostered, or rather, was the fostered dad or the kind of the quasi stepdad for Reverend Howard. So it's going to be a great day to honor a man. The only thing I say is we should probably do these things when people are alive, but it's really going to be a great day to honor his legacy and to keep it alive. So hopefully, I will see you there. Thanks.
Thank you. Other commissioners? Moving to any, yes, please, sorry.
Just, it's, I'm not the board liaison, but again, Parks and Rec will be talking about dogs in the parks again this meeting. So anybody that that is particular interest to should attend.
You totally killed my vibe.
Is there any new business? Is there any old business?
Well, I wish Steve Norsini was here because I would love to, Steve?
I think so.
Or maybe Bill? Can we get an update on Conestoga on that road closer? Because I get like three or four emails and complaints. It's not hate mail yet, but I think if we keep it there, it will be very soon. Just kind of an update on, hopefully, when, and again, I know we're at the mercy of the public utility, and it's a state road, and it's PennDOT, it's not you, it's not me, it's not you. But any kind of update, just to at least know that they're working on it, and it will get done, and there is a light somewhere at the end of that tunnel.
Yes. And this is my primary drive in and out from where I live over off of Lowry's. So I get to enjoy that ride every day. This is, for the benefit of the folks who may not know, this is an aqua project on a PennDOT road. So it is managed by PennDOT, the contractor is awarded through aqua. So we are limited in our oversight still, though, between Matt Pallotti and Public Works and Steve Norsini. We continue to press for improvements to the trench resurfacing, which in a couple spots is really bad. They have made some incremental improvements, but we still press, especially as, well, with the existing stretch from Lowry's to pretty much the 320 intersection. The estimated time of completion on that from their project manager is early October. That will include full restoration for the impacted areas, so it'll be, you know, a new We're not confident they'll meet that date. They have not met many yet. So I, some weeks after that, I think, is the window, or this fall is the window for completion on that segment. There is another phase that takes that project from where it's terminating now at Lowry's all the way to County Line. So their intention there is to move shortly thereafter, shortly after Phase 1 is done, is to start Phase 2. We are trying our best to give us some sort of break, whether it be a few weeks, if we can get a month out of it, just something where there's, Conestoga is not under construction for some period of time. But they have their approval through PennDOT, and they have their permit to start that segment sometime in November. And that will go through until spring of next year.
Well, thank you for your honest answer. I mean, I appreciate it. It's the news. It's realistic. So hopefully, sooner than later, but thank you.
The one other anecdote to the Phase 2, it's a different contractor. We're a little bit more familiar with that contractor and the work that they do. So we're hoping that the trench restorations during the course of the project are a little bit better, a little bit easier to drive on, especially if it's going to occur over the winter months and our guys have to plow. That, it's critical to have that smooth, otherwise it can't be plowed, which creates a whole nother safety issue when we get snow and ice. So that's the update.
Yes, please.
I just want to, on the other side, say that after all summer of hell, the Eagle Road-King of Prussia intersection is absolutely beautiful. And that was a whole combination of the township, the two colleges, and PennDOT. So Mr. Norsini missed it.
Any other new business? Is there any old business? Last call for public participation. Is there any comment? Not seeing any. I'll ask for a motion to adjourn in a second. Okay. Thank you all. Oh, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Thank you all. Enjoy your evening.